Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the January 30th, 2015, meeting of the Merrimack Zoning Board of Adjustment, the last one for the year. And Lenny, would you sit in for Tony at this time?
Yeah, I could do that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure that's in there. Lynn, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Patrick, would you do the preamble, please?
Sure. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will proceed with the petitions in the order they are listed on the agenda unless the board deems it appropriate to take a petition out of order. State and local ordinances set out the criteria that must be met in order for this board to grant a request. The minimum requirements are outlined in the form provided by the Community Development Office. And the petitioner should, with this format, to provide adequate justification for the board to grant the request. The chair will then open the meeting to hear testimony either for or against the request. All discussions will be between the speaker and the board. Please be respectful of all, and in the interest of time, refrain from repeating previous testimony. No new documentation will be accepted by the board for consideration this evening. But the board reserves the right to ask for additional testimony at any time. After hearing the facts from all parties regarding a petition, the chairman will close the public hearing and the board will deliberate and vote on the request before moving on to the next petition. Please turn off all cell phones. Anyone who will be speaking tonight, could you please stand? Be sworn in if you're going to speak at all tonight. Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but truth, so help you God. All right. Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, I forgot to mention that the next meeting of the zoning board will be January 27th of 2016. We have five items tonight. Three items that are representative by Attorney Michael, and two others that are Nicholas Delamas. Are you here?
Yes.
Okay. Attorney Michael, if you don't mind, I am going to move his two petitions to the beginning. And we hear yours. All right, thank you, sir. All right, Nicholas Delamas, would you please step forward? And would you sign in, please?
My name is Attorney Joe Mitchell. I'll be representing Mr. Delamas here this evening.
Great. Can you make sure your green light is on, on your mic?
It should be a bright, bright green.
Yes, thank you.
No, it's not on, sir. Pass it and you'll see it brighter.
Ah, you're right. Do you want me to read it?
Okay. This is Nicholas, am I pronouncing it right, Delamas?
Nick is okay.
Oh, I've got to need your name for the... Who is petitioner owner requesting a special exemption under Section 2.02.2(c) of the zoning ordinance to permit the conversion of an existing legal non-conforming single-family dwelling into a multifamily dwelling. The parcel is located at 565 DW Highway in the C1 Limited Commercial, Aquifer, and Elderly Housing Overlay Districts and Wellhead Protection Area, Tax Map 6D1, Lot 123, in our case number 2015-47. And Attorney Mitchell, if you could just give us a very quick rundown, 100 words less than we'll get right into his request.
Yes, yes, Madam Chairwoman. Mr. Delamas has owned this property for, it'll be 30 years this coming year. When he took over the property, it was being used for residential purposes. There was a family living on the main level. It's a single-level home with a cellar underneath it. And below it was a two-bedroom apartment, which we believe to be an in-law apartment. So at the time that he took it over, there were five bedrooms, three bedrooms up and two bedrooms down. And since he's owned it for the last 30 years, he has also used it as a five-bedroom residence. He has been renting out the first floor to one party, one family, and he wishes now to convert the cellar part, which was formerly two bedrooms, into two-studio residences, primarily aimed at servicing low-to-middle-income people. So you want to go through the criteria in addition to what's...
Okay. First of all, would you just explain for the audience why this is, all of a sudden has become non-conforming? So it was because of...
There was a complaint.
It was found in August of the property, it was found in, it was in violation of the code, basically.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chairwoman, we believe that someone lodged a complaint, a form of residence in one of the two units in the cellar, lodged a complaint with one of the departments of the town, saying that it was not approved for having people live in the cellar of the unit, but only was approved as a single-family dwelling.
Right. All right, if you'd like to get into the points a lot, and I'm sure you know to stop after every point, so we can ask you any questions if need be.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chairwoman, we believe that the specific site is an appropriate location because this has been, as far as we can tell, approved for a residential area since it was subdivided by a plan recorded in 1959. We think the residential use is appropriate because the abutters to the north, which is across Pine Street, and also to the east, which is behind this building toward the river, are both residential. This has been a long-time residential use. There is adequate parking for residential purposes, and we believe that if it's residential rather than being limited commercial, which is the zoning in this area, there will be less vehicular traffic than either as a retail or an office location. The second criteria, the use...
Yes, just a moment. Any questions from the board?
Joe, in the plan in '59, was that for a single family or was it for an in-law?
Well, Lynn, the only thing that we have been able to find is the plan that was recorded at the Registry of Deeds. If I can go up and show it to you.
Yeah, just give me the gist.
It's a standard group of small rectangles that looks like it's meant for a residential subdivision.
So it didn't define who was going to be living there? It just laid out the plot?
As far as I know, it just laid out the plot.
Okay.
Attorney Mitchell, before you go any further, I did not mention that we only have four members of the board, so we have two out right now. If the vote is two to two, then if it's two to two, if it's a split vote, like that, your request is going to be denied. Now, do you want to go any further, or do you want to follow this through?
Right. I understand we can still appeal for a rehearing in the event that it's tied? Is that true?
Yes.
Okay. We would like to proceed if we may, ma'am.
All right, and I apologize for not advising you.
Madam Chairwoman, the second criteria, and members of the board, is that the use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood because the neighborhood presently exists of abutters to the north and to the east that are similar residential units. The abutment to the south is the Merrimack House of Pizza, so that's obviously been that way for a long time and is not a residential use. Questions?
No.
Third, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians because this residential use has a very low vehicular traffic on Pine Street or DW Highway, and we believe that as such, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard.
Go ahead.
Questions? No?
No, go ahead.
Fourth is that adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed uses or use or uses. This house has adequate area for one apartment on the main floor and two studio apartments in the basement. It currently has parking along the DW Highway in the front for use of the people on the main floor. And then there is a relatively large parking area behind the unit to the east for the people who are going to be living in the studio apartments downstairs.
Questions? Lynn?
It's currently a two-bedroom apartment downstairs, or was currently being used as a two-bedroom apartment?
Is it two-bedroom?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
So the request is for a change to two studios?
Yeah, we want to do it as a studio because the fire officials have some concern if it's an apartment. So I think the thinking is if it's a studio, it's more likely to have just one person in there rather than, you know, a small family, and therefore it's better off as a studio. That's really the reason for the conversion.
All right, go ahead.
And I think that concludes our presentation of the four points.
All right, questions or comments from the board?
Fran?
Yes.
This is on the corner of Pine and DW Highway?
Yes, ma'am.
And on the other side of Pine, as I understand it, there was another similar residence with living space upstairs and a separate unit downstairs?
Yes. That's my good house.
Is there a separate unit downstairs? I know there's a lot of parking behind it.
Yes.
Yes, so it's similar.
Similar to that.
Okay, thank you.
And we think keeping this, again, in the spirit of the ordinance here, that keeping this as a residential area will somewhat buffer the properties behind it to the east, which are similar one-story, smaller homes, and help buffer them from the DW Highway rather than if it were a retail or an office use.
Offhand, do you have the, in the general ballpark, how many square feet these apartments are going to be?
They're going to be, let's see. Forty-six?
I would guess forty-five.
Looks to me like one is going to be forty-six by twenty-five, and the other one's going to be twenty-three by thirty-eight.
No, 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 that's the way to...
Oh, yeah, it's going to be smaller than that. Hold on.
It's twenty-five by ten and two by twenty-one, twenty-five by twenty-one.
Okay, Mr. Delamas corrected me. It's going to be approximately twenty-five by twenty-one on the northernmost apartment.
And the other one is twenty-two by twenty-five, twenty-two by twenty-five.
Okay, the second one, the southerly one, will be twenty-two by twenty-five.
So four hundred to five hundred square feet.
But for an individual person, that's more than sufficient.
Yeah.
And it would not be sufficient for a family, which is, the idea is to restrict it to just an individual, which makes more sense.
Well, yeah.
There's someone who has dogs like us.
Speak for yourself, white man.
Big dog. All right, seeing anything further from the board? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is anyone here that would like to testify for this petition? Anyone who'd like to testify against it? Close the public hearing. Again, anything further from the board?
I was out there and took a look at it, and, I mean, it's going to be small, but, I mean, you bring up a good point. I mean, if it's an individual, and, you know, individual housing like that is probably not as easy to find around Merrimack. Everything's usually two- or three-bedroom apartments, and if you're single and don't have, you know, the money for that, I mean, it's going to be a nice alternative. And it's good to see that something is going to come to it. It's not going to just be left derelict. The only concern I had was it's a pretty big parking lot back there. I hate to see that become someone's auto shop back there, or anything like that, but...
Well, we have no control over that.
Yeah, but, I mean, but with that being said...
There are ramifications for that, if it does.
Yeah. But I think there's a lot of room, and I think it's a good proposal, and it makes good use of that.
And I think buffering for the properties behind it is legitimate.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. It's a big parking lot, and there's a fence there, and all that. I agree with that, so... Anybody else? Lenny?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Nicholas Delamas, petitioner-owner, special exemption under Section 2.02.2(c) of the zoning ordinance to permit the conversion of an existing legal non-conforming, that needs to be spelt correctly, single-family dwelling into a multifamily dwelling. Parcel is located at 565 Daniel Webster Highway in the C1 Limited Commercial, Aquafire Conservation and Elderly Housing Overlay Districts and Wellhead Protection Area, Tax Map 6D1, Lot 123, Case Number 2015-47.
If I may, on Tim's memo, there are two suggested conditions.
Just going to get to those.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so staff recommends if this is approved, granting of the associated variances, 2015, Case Number 2015-50, so it would be the next case. The applicant shall obtain a site plan approval from the planning board for the proposed multifamily residence if this is approved.
And now do we have a second? Lenny?
Lenny, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's a four-zero-zero.
All right.
All right, your next petition?
Next one, members of the board, is an application for a...
I have to introduce the petition.
Oh, sorry. Just have them written to record. Thanks.
Nicholas Delamas, petitioner-owner, requesting variances under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a lot with lot area of 8,712 square feet, where 40,000 square feet is required, frontage of eighty feet, whereas 125 feet is required, front setback of 28 feet, whereas 30 feet is required, and setback of 15 feet, where 20 feet is required, and depth of 110 feet, whereas 125 feet is required. The parcel is located at 565 Daniel Webster Highway in the C1 Limited Commercial, Aquifer Conservation and Elderly Housing Overlay Districts and Wellhead Protection Area, Tax Map 6D1, Lot 123, in Case Number 2015-50. And again, you can give us a little scenario of why he wants it, and then we'll go into the points.
Yeah, we feel that this entire subdivision, and there's probably 11, there's 13 lots in here, by a plan recorded 1959, predate the ordinance, because this would not be allowed, obviously, today under the current standards. But prior to the adoption of the ordinance, apparently it was okay for the town. There are a number of these smaller units along the DW Highway in this area. And we think, again, it's been in continuous residential use as far as we know. Well, we've owned it for 30 years, and it looks as though that it's been part of this neighborhood of, again, 13 different lots since, it looks like, 1959. So there's a limited number of things that you can do in a commercial area with a lot this small, and we think that it's best served to have it continue, to have a variance to continue as a residential use.
All right, and if you would go into the points a lot, please?
Yes, ma'am. Members of the board, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because providing for housing for residents of all levels of income is very much in the public interest and is one of the purposes of the ordinance. And this housing is aimed at primarily people who would be in the medium-to-low-income area. Second, the spirit of the ordinance is observed...
Just a moment, please.
I'm sorry.
Any questions from the board? All right, go ahead.
Second, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because this area of town has historically been used for residential housing, and a multifamily as modest as this would be appropriate for this part of Merrimack. No plans in the building's footprint are foreseen or planned. And again, we think this matches other buildings that are in this part of town and should be allowed to have a variance to continue.
Questions? All right, go ahead.
Number three, granting the variance would do substantial justice because the house has been used for residential purpose as far back as we believe, 1958 or 1959.
All right, go ahead.
Number four, for the following reasons, the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished because no external changes are contemplated or planned, and the two abutters to the north and to the east are both residential.
Go ahead.
Okay. Number five, unnecessary hardship owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. Denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because, number one, the size of this lot and the use of this building are believed to be grandfathered. This lot is more suitable to residential use than any other purpose for other uses in the limited commercial area. Next section is that reasonable use, I'm sorry, that the proposed use is reasonable because a lot of this size is more reasonable for residential than any other limited commercial use. And lastly...
Just a moment. Do you feel he's...
Yeah.
All right, you don't have to read the last. You're fine.
Okay.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board? I'll open the public hearing. Anybody who would like to testify for this petition? Anyone who'd like to testify against it? Close the public hearing. I have a motion, please.
Motion to approve. I mean, if this was, the house was built in the 50s, and most of our zoning laws are what, based on, you know, have been written in about the 80s and 90s?
I think based on all the criteria we discussed on the earlier petition.
That's pretty much, yeah. I mean, it makes sense, right?
The law directs, he can't make land.
Just wanted to make sure. All right, motion approved. Nicholas Delamas, petitioner-owner, variances under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a lot with the area of 8,712 square feet, whereas 40,000 square feet is required, frontage of eighty feet, whereas 125 feet is required, front setback of 28 feet, whereas 30 feet is required, side setback of 15 feet, whereas 20 feet is required, and depth of 110 feet, whereas 125 is required. Parcel is located at 565 Daniel Webster Highway in the C1 Limited Commercial, Aquafire Conservation, Elderly Housing, Overlay Districts, and Wellhead Protection Area, Tax Map 6D1, Lot 123, Case Number 2015-50, with, again, the staff recommendation that the applicant obtain site approval from the planning board for the proposed multifamily residence before proceeding.
Second?
Sure.
All right. Lynn is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Abstention? Four-zero-zero.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. Thank you.
Good luck and Happy New Year.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. So the re, this is, I noticed, this is the request for rehearing. George E. Michael of Bernstein, Schur, Sawyer, and Nelson PA, petitioner and Volt Motor Storage Owner, request for rehearing regarding Case Number 2015-39, in which the board voted to deny a variance under Section 17.10.3 of the zoning ordinance to permit an additional 160-foot, square-foot ground sign, whereas 63-square-foot ground sign was permitted on 526 Daniel Webster Highway in 2014. Parcel is located at 526 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 General Commercial and Aquafire Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area, Tax Map 5D-2, Lot 001, Case Number 2015-46. What's the discussion of the board?
Did I make a request? Do we do this after the variances? Because we don't need to be here for this. You ordinarily don't have public...
Right, there's no public input or anything.
I am just asking if we could...
Could you catch me before...
I thought I'd ask.
I have no problem with that, Attorney Michael.
If you don't have a problem with it, we don't have a problem with it. All right, so...
I thought you'd like to stay and see what our decision is.
You'll have time to, you can talk about it and do what you'd like to do, but you don't need us, you don't need us here for that.
New Year's Eve Eve, as they say.
We have to be here, you have to be... No, I'm just kidding. All right, let me read the next one for you. So, moving on...
All right, first of all, we've moved...
To number six.
We've moved Case Number 2015-46 to...
This one.
Moving number three behind number seven. Right.
Correct.
Do we have that, Paul? Okay. All right, go ahead.
So, we're good to go on this one. All right. So, George E. Michael of Bernstein... It's Gregory Michael. That was my dad.
Greg's father is not here.
Gregory, I apologize, Attorney Michael. Gregory E. Michael of Bernstein, Schur, Sawyer, and Nelson PA, petitioner, Anne Beverly D. Hilton Revocable Trust, Anne George L. Hilton Revocable Trust owners, variance under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a lot with area of 52,985 square feet, whereas 100,000 square feet is required, continuous upland area of 52,985 square feet, whereas 100,000 square feet is required, and depth of 150 feet, whereas 300 feet is required. The parcel is located on Tinker Road in the R1 Residential and Aquafire Conservation Districts, Tax Map 2C, Lot 110, Case Number 2015-48. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Number six and number seven are both pretty well tied together based on what happened with the road, and I'm wondering if it would be appropriate to consider these both at the same time?
Procedurally, there wouldn't be anything wrong with that.
Might save us a little bit of redundant testimony?
It's going to be, you're correct, Lynn, it's going to be very close in discussion, yes.
Do you want me to read them both in?
But there are going to be specific differences on it.
Pardon me?
Specific differences that there might be discussion on.
Well, you can certainly vote on...
Well, you can certainly vote on them separately. I think they're separate applications, so you'd vote on them separately, but I have no problem-
I would prefer taking them separately.
I, I would say we'd vote on them separately, but I think the discussion can concern both of them at the same time, which would save us some time.
I agree, same criteria.
Yeah, well, Attorney Michael knows what, what, what belongs where, so.
Well, why don't we, I'd ask that you read it in and we can take-
Right.
We'll take them up separately, I believe, for voting purposes, but I, I have no problem reading it in so that the testimony applies to both. It may save us a bit of confusion and time. Thank you.
Gregory E. Michael of Bernstein Schur Sawyer and Nelson P. A. petitioner and Beverly, Beverly D. Hilton Revocable Trust and George L. Hilton Revocable Trust owners, variance under section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a lot with a lot area of 30,988 square feet, whereas 100,000 square feet is required, continuous upland area of 19,801 square feet, whereas 100,000 square feet is required, frontage of 82 feet, whereas 250 feet is required, front setback of 40 feet, whereas 50 feet is required, and depth of 158 feet, whereas 300 feet is required. The parcel is located on Tinker Road in the R1 Residential and Aqua Fire Conservation Districts Tax Map 2C Lot 110-01 Case Number 2015-49.
Thank you. Attorney Michael, again, on behalf of the applicant, I'll turn to the plan that was filed with the board and just kind of give you an overview of the, the lots that we're dealing with. The first lot, 110, is the area that more or less lies to the north side of, of Tinker Road. You can see it, if you follow my finger, it's kind of a boat-shaped lot, actually. Down below is the lower lot, 110-1, and this lot, watch my finger, goes like this, down like this, down like this. I would point out that the, the Lot 110-1 has frontage on both LeBlanc Lane as well as Tinker Road. Both are Class V roads, it's my understanding. I don't believe we need a frontage variance. I know we applied for it, but when we took, took a closer look at the ordinance where it defines frontage, I think that we're, we're all set with that. But in any event, if the board disagrees, that's fine, we'll, we'll certainly accept the variance for that particular parcel. I will say that we're planning to access it off the LeBlanc Lane side. That's my understanding, is that correct, Mike?
Correct.
And Mike Caston is here from my office as well to help answer questions, and we also have Eric from-
Alex.
Alex, excuse me, I know I get that wrong. TF Moran, Jim O'Neil did some of the plans, but Alex is here to help us out as well. I would point out that I'm familiar with the history of this area, as I'm sure a number of the board members are. When we reconstructed the Camp Sergeant Road, Con Edel Boulevard, there were quite a number of discussions and rewrites, if you will, of the various plans associated with this, and at the end of the day, the road wasn't supposed to be here, it was supposed to be north of the 110 parcel. The state, in its infinite wisdom, said to heck with that, and they, and if you look at some of the other plans that show the overview of this, which, which I don't know that they're really germane at this point, but in any event, they ran the road right through this parcel that originally was 2.875 acres in size. The other interesting thing, sewer was planned to be put down in this area, but that, that did not happen in this specific locale. There was sewer down not far, but it's certainly not sewer that you'd bring in for two lots. Had sewer been in this area and had the, the state not whacked us the way they did, you could have gotten four lots in here under, under the zoning rules, 40,000 square feet sewer and water. But that's not to be, that's not what we're dealing with. We're in an area that's residentially zoned, we're in, in an area that if you look at the GIS maps and the overall tax maps of the town, that there are any number of smaller lots in this particular area, most of them don't have the setback requirement of 50 feet, I can tell you that, it's much less. But in any event, we at TF Moran go out and take a look at this, survey the parcels, locate the various points, look at the soils, so that we can have an understanding of where we are. We have, in fact, a de facto subdivision, but there is no plan, and that is problematic if you're going for financing and discussing the legalities, if you will, of the lot. So, we have no plan, we're planning to go to the planning board on, on January 3rd to have them assist us with that. But we've got a de facto subdivision here with parcels on both sides of a public, public way. But again, no plan for it because the state just, they ran their road through, took it, and, you know, we are where we are with these, with these two parcels. Part of the request tonight involves, again, the utilization of the parcels. This is residentially zoned land, it's been here for any number of years. Again, it's not a hardship that the Hiltons created, I want to make that very clear, this is something that was done to a parcel that they owned for a number of years, and we believe that some relief is clearly appropriate. We can design appropriate septics for these parcels that will comply with both the state and the town standards. Also, there is town water here, these units would be connected to town water, and the proposal, again, is to locate single-family dwellings on each lot. We believe that the lots can clearly support the units, there's nothing unusual about them in that sense, other than the size, but we do need a couple of variances to make that, make that work and make it conform. Again, when we're talking about depth, the, the state helped create it with the road. When we talk about some of the other issues, these were created when the, when the, when the road was driven through. So, with that in mind and with that overview, I'll, I'll let Mike kind of take you through the zoning factors-
Before you-
Yeah, go ahead.
You finish, Attorney Michael.
Yes.
Patrick would like to ask a question.
Sure, go ahead.
So, I, I, real quick, I want to ask, are we discussing both of these properties? Okay. So, my question, I guess my question is, you had mentioned that there's no town sewer for either one of these.
No, there isn't.
So, we're gonna go with a lichfield, I would imagine.
They'll be state, and again, there are very stringent state and town standards for septics. We have the appropriate areas to get approvals for those systems. We're not asking for any variances or relief for septic system installation, I want to make that crystal clear.
Well, my, my, my question is with, with a lot of the upland-
Yes.
That's, and obviously the wetlands that are right on, right down by LeBlanc Road-
Correct.
LeBlanc Lane. I just want to, that's what I was trying to get an understanding when I was looking at the plan, and again, I, I take, I, where, where those might be proposed so we don't have runoff that's either going into someone else's property or going into wetlands, is what I'm concerned about.
Two things, those issues are important issues, that's the first thing, and the state and local regulations of this town require installations that don't do that. The other point is we're going to, the planning board with us as, as well, they're gonna be taking a look at it, but we can't do anything out here without appropriate approved septic installations, and we're not requesting any variances for those.
Okay, and that, that was the other thing I wanted to see, if we were gonna be going down that road.
No, we're not going down that road.
Okay.
These are gonna be proper, appropriate, legal systems to serve us, single-family dwellings.
And single, and again, single-family-
Single-family dwellings.
Great.
Which are consistent and permitted in the zone.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Attorney Michael, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Now, that roadway that cut the property in two-
Right here, Tinker Road.
Right, now, was that taken by eminent domain, or were they compensated for that land?
Well, they, they, they took it by eminent domain, there was some compensation, but I went back and looked, it wasn't a whole lot, I can tell you that right now, and they chopped up the 2.875-acre parcel. Yes, there was, there was, I'd be, I'd be obviously misleading you, they took, they took the land to relocate the road in this area, but that wasn't the original intent, I can tell you that. And that, I think the state should have done more to either take all of it. In other words, if, if you, the state shouldn't be leaving small chunks, but I think the state felt, let me tell you what I think the state felt, I remember the discussions about this at the time, was that they felt that sewer would be in the area, and that would, you know, help solve the problem because, you know, the lots are, are, are smaller, they're not that small. I mean, this is 52,000 feet of uplands here, this is not exactly a, you know, it's, I recognize it doesn't meet zoning, but it's not exactly a small lot. The other one isn't that small either, there are plenty of lots, we used to build on 20,000 square foot lots in Merrimack, those were allowed a number of years back, we both remember that, but, you know, this is 30-some-odd thousand, we can get our septic on it, so, Mike, who owns the piece to the side? Didn't we take a look at that? The state still owns, owns those?
Yeah, that was taken as part of the layout.
Right here.
There's a slight discrepancy with the GIS map and the layout map, and if you go to the GIS, I think it's shown as part of, part of the Hilton property, but it, it's not.
But I, I think what's important is that the likelihood of anything happening to this is pretty remote. I mean, it's, it's, it's almost like it's part of our lot, but we do not calculate it within the square footage calculation of our lot, but for all practical purposes, it's, it's open land that isn't going to be developed by the state, that's for sure. So, I'm giving you the real-world picture of this, not the mythical world picture, but again, from a practical standpoint, that triangulated area would increase the size of this lot by, by at least half, half again, and that, that isn't going to be used for anything by the state that we're aware of. Do you have any other questions about kind of the overview of this?
Going back a little bit-
Yes.
If, if Tinker Road had been left alone, it would have been where LeBlanc is now.
Yes.
And we would have had one large parcel of land that could have been subdivided into three or four lots easily.
Yes.
And all we're asking is to have two lots put in there.
That's essentially the, the nub of it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Any other questions before we go through the criteria?
Anyone have any questions? Anything? All right, if we could get to, to the points there.
Thank you.
Thank you, you've really cleared up a lot of, some of the questions I had.
I compliment staff, they, they, they gave you, and I, I say that, I mean, they gave you a pretty good background on this, and again, while I was familiar with this, I, I did work down in the Tinker area for the LeBlanks and some quiet title petitions, somewhat, somewhat familiar with what occurred down in this, this region back in the day, so to speak, but I do commend staff, they gave you a very good snapshot of some of what happened here. Thank you.
Ready for me?
Yep.
So, I, I will forego any introduction other than sort of note that I, I think it's appropriate to talk about both lots at the same time, I know there's some concern there. The way that I see this is there's some differences in the facts, but the analysis is the same, and the main difference that I see is just the, the location of those wetlands on the bottom lot, the 110-1.
Yeah, I would, I, you know, discussion is fine, I would just like a separate vote on each one.
And I think, I completely agree with that, I just wanted to sort of, in trying to prepare how to present this to you, I think it's fair to, to talk about it all at once because it's, you know, essentially-
Yeah, most, very much so, because then we can compare them as we're going right-
Yeah, and I think the second run-through would be-
Right.
Very redundant and probably wouldn't offer too much to you. So, so that said, Michael Glass, along with, with Greg Michael here, I'm tasked with sort of walking the, the board through the, the five prongs of, of RSA 67433 for the variance. I'll pause after I complete each one, if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you.
Now, we'll begin with, granting these variances will not be contrary to the public interest, and I'll start with sort of case law in this, the courts have said to be contrary to the public interest, they must be unduly in a marked degree conflict with the zoning ordinance, such that it violates the ordinance's basic zoning objectives. So, as such, we start with kind of the, the ordinance and its intent. Here, we're, we're requesting several different types of variances. As to the minimum dimensional requirements, the goal of those is to, to obviously ensure appropriate access, sort of dictate size and shape of lots. The goal with respect to the, the front setback would be to prevent encroachments and to sort of provide a buffer between development on adjacent lots, and the goal for the minimum continuous uplands sort of is, is multifold, there's some environmental considerations there to minimize any sort of pollution issues, to ensure the appropriate use of the land and to ensure against any excessive expenses from the town, and that comes from section 3.02.1 of the ordinance. So, in, in response to those, I think from an engineering perspective, it's clear that that these lots provide safe access. You know, we've, we've requested technically a frontage variance on the, the 110-1 lot, but it does have adequate frontage on Tinker Road and, and from a, from a design standpoint, adequate frontage on LeBlanc in order to provide a driveway. The top lot has, has adequate frontage, there's no relief requested in that respect. With respect to the lot size and shape, again, as we've sort of acknowledged, these lots have been in existence for decades now. This isn't a case where we're trying to carve off too small and sort of uniquely shaped lots from, from a larger parcel, rather, you know, the state in essence, essentially created the de facto subdivision as, as Greg has, has talked about. Now, with respect to the minimum setbacks, we are seeking a, a modest 10-foot setback, and this is ultimately driven by the, the wetlands on the right of the, of that 110-1, and, and we're still proposing a 40-foot setback where a 50 is required. That 40 feet is certainly consistent with the area, I, I looked on the GIS and I did some sort of rough calculations, and especially in that area, there's some, some, some older homes that, that are very close to the way. Most of the subdivision homes are less, that I saw were less than 50 feet, and it's, it's fair to say that, that the 40 feet that we're proposing is certainly consistent with the neighborhood and, and the character of that neighborhood. And with respect to the, the uplands requirement, which goes to the, the appropriate use of the land and, and the burden on the town, both lots contain, as, as we've discussed, adequate area for, for fully compliant and reviewed septic systems. Moreover, this is, we don't need wells here, so there's no concern about a well being next to a septic, this is town water. There's, there's sufficient area to allow for a, a single-family residential use, which is what, what's being proposed here, and that, that proposed use is consistent with, with the town, excuse me, with the neighborhood, pardon me. So, all that said, in conclusion, the requested variances do not conflict with the basic objectives of the ordinance, and granting these variances will not be contrary to the public interest.
Any questions? Lynn? All right, go ahead.
Okay. Moving on to the second point, the spirit of the ordinance is observed, and, and there is some interplay between this prong, I think, and the, the prong I just spoke about, so I won't regurgitate all that information for you.
Thank you.
So, again, the spirit rationale of, of these minimum requirements is to encourage safe and appropriate development, you know, make sure that the, the land is used appropriately without costs being placed upon the town. Both of these lots contain adequate frontage and area to allow for, for safe and reasonable single-family development, which is consistent with the neighborhood and which will protect against any sort of environmental pollution or unnecessary expenses to the town. Again, these, these lots have existed in their form, their current form, for decades as a result of the, the state layout, and, and they're sort of already a fa, a part of the fabric of that, that neighborhood. And granting these variants simply sort of formalizes or allows the applicant to, to go forward with a, a more formal planning subdivision. So, in conclusion, the spirit of the ordinance, which ultimately seeks to promote health, safety, convenience, welfare for the town, is observed by these requested variances.
All right, any questions or comments? All right, number three.
Number three, granting the variance will do substantial justice, and when, when you talk about the substantial justice prong, it's a, it's a balancing test, and, and courts of case law talks about how substantial justice is found when the loss to the applicant in denying the variance request exceeds the gain to the public in strictly enforcing the ordinance. So, applying that sort of balancing test to, to the facts of this property and these two lots finds in favor of allowing these variances. First, denying the variances will not result in any appreciable gain to the public, given that the proposed lots have been part of the neighborhood for decades and are engineered and designed to allow for, for safe and reasonable single-family use in a, in a residential neighborhood consistent with the existing stock. Moreover, these, these lots are not going to threaten the public health, safety, or welfare. Contrary, on the other side of the balancing test, denying this application would result in a substantial loss- in a substantial loss to the applicant by preventing a safe and reasonable use of, of its property, as was intended when this lot was laid out. If these variances are denied through no fault of the, the applicant's, they'll be unable to use this property. As such, denying the variances greatly exceeds any public, excuse me, the loss of denying these variants greatly exceeds any public gain and warrants granting the application.
Questions or comments? Number four?
Okay. Number four concerns the values, and the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished in this proposal. Again, this request simply seeks to formalize the, the lots that have existed for decades. This, this request won't diminish the character of the neighborhood, which includes existing single-family homes and lots of various sizes and types, which is consistent with what we're proposing here. The proposed lots will be used in a manner consistent with neighboring lots and shouldn't produce any different or significant traffic or noise or odor or any other detrimental impacts to the surrounding area. Thus, the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished.
All right, questions or comments? And number five?
And finally, the unnecessary hardship prong. Rather than read that full introduction, I sort of summarize it for you. I think of this as, as because of the special conditions of the property, that there's no sort of fair relationship between the purpose of the ordinance and applying it to these particular lots. So in this case, this property is certainly unique. As we've discussed, the creation back in, I think, the early 90s, late 80s, early 90s, was a very unique incident. And, and the overriding purpose of this ordinance is to, to control uses that are not suited for a particular zoning district. And on a more granular level, in a residential district, the purpose of the zoning is to ensure safe and reasonable residential use. Here, the, the proposed lots are, are more than adequate to support residential dwellings. They allow for safe access. They allow for adequate size of, of structures and infrastructure requirements, including the, the septic systems that we've discussed, and they are, they are serviced by town water. Moreover, from a practical perspective, you know, these lots have existed for years. They're already part of the, the character of the neighborhood, and they're consistent with their neighbors. And I will note that with respect to 110-1, which is essentially the, the setback, that 40 feet as opposed to the 50 feet is still effective in, in sort of centering the development in the center of the lot and providing neighboring lots with a buffer from, from any structures. As a result of, of all that, there's no substantial relationship between the, the general public purpose of the ordinance and their application to the property at issue, because, as we've discussed, this proposal ensures safe access, formally recognizes the lots in the neighborhood, which have existed for decades, ensures appropriate use of the land, both environmentally in a manner that does not stress town resources, and creates adequate buffers. And finally, the second prong of that is whether or not this proposed use is reasonable, and it is reasonable as it is a permitted use in the district, which is single-family residential use.
Okay, any questions or comments?
I'd like to make just one more comment if I could on this, and I'll be done. You know, 3.02 is an interesting part of our ordinance, has been there for many, many years, as we all know. And it really is set up, when you develop and create lots, it's always difficult to kind of take it and apply it to this. Yet we do, because that's the way things are, I guess. I, I don't know how else to describe it. These lots have already been created. And as a result of the way they were created and the size and where the state ran the road, we're stuck with this kind of funky situation. We're here talking about things that really, more appropriately, apply to lots that we would try to create. We didn't. They're here. They're part of the, again, as Mike has indicated, the fabric of the area. And that's it, and thank you.
All right, if no one has any questions, I'm going to open the public hearing. Excuse me. All right, public hearing is open. Is there anyone who'd like to testify or speak for this variance?
For either one of them.
For either one of them. Anyone who'd like to speak against either one of them? Close the public hearing. Do you hear a motion? Okay, any discussion?
I would, I'd echo Attorney Michael's agreement. We seem to see him a lot when Section 3.02 comes into play. And so, I, I, and he, he's right. You can't, I mean, we have a lot of unique lots in, in Merrimack, which is fine. I mean, and in some cases such as this, I mean, it definitely has to be taken into consideration. The fabric of that area is, is residential, so I don't see any issues.
And it was taken by the state, so when you leave, the owners had.
No choice.
No choice at all.
No, it's a town road, right? It's not a state road now.
It's a town road.
It's a town road, so there's no.
We don't need to deal with the OT.
Okay. So, as we said, Attorney Michael, we're going to read these in one at a time, and we're going to vote on them separately. So, we're going to start with Gregory E. Michael of Bernstein Schur Sawyer &amp; Nelson, PA petitioner, and Beverly D. Hilton Revocable Trust, and George L. Hilton Revocable Trust owners. This is a motion to grant the variance under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a lot with a lot area of 52,985 square feet, whereas 100,000 square feet is required, continuous upland area of 52,985 square feet, whereas 100,000 square feet is required, and depth of 100 feet, whereas 300 feet is required. The parcel is located at Tinker Road in the R1 Residential and Aquafire Conservation District's tax map 2C Lot 110, Case Number 2015-8-48.
Just to clarify, you said the depth of 150 feet?
The depth of 150 feet, whereas 300 feet is required.
Okay, I was just, I misheard, so I just wanted to make sure.
Let me just double check. There is nothing from staff.
I'll second.
All right. Lynn is second, and everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four zero zero.
All right. Motion to approve Gregory E. Michael of Bernstein Schur Sawyer &amp; Nelson, PA petitioner, and Beverly D. Hilton Revocable Trust, and George L. Hilton Revocable Trust owners, variances under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a lot with an area, a lot area of 30,988 square feet, whereas 100,000 square feet is required, continuous upland area of 19,801 square feet, whereas 100,000 square feet is required, frontage of 82 feet, whereas 250 feet is required, front setback of 40 feet, whereas 50 feet is required, and depth of 158 feet, whereas 300 feet is required. The parcel is located on Tinker Road in the R1 Residential and Aquafire Conservation District's tax map 2C Lot 110-01, Case Number 2015-49.
Okay, Lynn is the second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? Abstentions? Four zero zero, sir.
Thank you very much, and a happy new year to you all.
Happy new year to you too.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is Gregory E. Michael of Bernstein Schur Sawyer Nelson, PA petitioner, and Vault Motor Storage owner. Request for a rehearing regarding Case Number 2015-39, in which the board voted to deny a variance under Section 17.10.3 of the zoning ordinance to permit an additional 160-foot, square foot ground sign, whereas 63 square foot ground sign was permitted at 526 DW Highway in 2014. The parcel is located at 526 DW Highway in the C2 General Commercial in Aquafire Conservation and Wellhead Protection Area, tax map 5D-2, Lot 001, Case Number 2015-46.
All right.
How's that? Do we have?
So what do you want to discuss?
Have they submitted any new information, Bob?
No.
Nothing at all?
Just the, the memo that you got from them, but.
So this one here?
Yeah, but no other, like, plans or specific facts outside of what's in there.
Can everybody read this?
I have a question.
Go ahead. I have a question, if I may. In the discussion here, it was mentioned that the, I believe the fire department has assigned a different street number to part of this parcel. Is that correct?
I unfortunately don't know anything about that.
I didn't hear anything about that.
Okay.
They signed a different street number to what parcel?
I, well, let me see if I can find it.
Was it in here?
I believe so. On page two of the letter from Bernstein Schur, the third paragraph down, at the end, it says, "At the request of the fire department, the third building was given a new address and is known as 528 DW Highway for that purpose."
Okay. I don't.
And I assume that that is the rear building that is just being constructed at, at the moment?
I believe you're correct on that.
Okay.
And therefore, if we're talking about a sign, I would say that this sign applies to this new building at this new address and is not relevant to the sign that's at the existing building at the existing address. Is that correct?
But it's the same company with the same verbiage.
Same company, same company.
Same verbiage.
But, but two different addresses.
Same property, though.
Two different addresses. I'm, I'm just questioning this.
Yeah, but how do you access the second building?
I'm just, I'm, I'm not going into that. I'm just saying we've got two different addresses. Buildings on one address, buildings on a second address, and, and maybe we need to have. I'm just thinking that if we have, regardless of ownership, ownership doesn't come into play, I don't believe on this, but if we have a building on, at one address and a building at a second address, then each building should be entitled to a sign? Is that correct?
Zoning only allows the sign based off of the individual property, not the buildings that are on it. So despite the fact that there are separate addresses for each of the buildings, it's reliant entirely on the fact that it's on that same property, and that property has already been granted a sign.
So there's one D. There was, there are two tracks.
Right. It's all on one individual track.
Okay, that was, that was what I was trying to clarify.
Okay, yeah.
So almost, in a sense, related to like, say, an apartment complex, you have multiple addresses, but it's one tract of land. I mean, I think closest I can come to thinking of something similar to that.
It's very similar, yes.
No, I don't, I don't consider it the same as, as an apartment complex, but.
Well, no, yeah, it's not in the essence of that, but I mean, when you're looking at the overall.
I, I understand where you're going with it. It's, you've got multiple buildings with multiple addresses on it, but it's all owned by the same entity? Would that be a correct word?
Yes.
Think of it as.
But I, I don't care about ownership. I'm looking at the addresses and the buildings.
Okay, so think of it in the essence of like the, of the mall or the outlets. You have multiple different addresses, but you have one ownership under.
And lots of different signs.
I see where you're going with it. I just, I have a hard time splitting.
I'm, I'm new here. I'm still new here. I'm still learning, and that's why I'm trying to clarify this.
And I'm not arguing, Lynn, I'm not arguing with you.
No, I understand that.
I just, I, I find it, I find, it seemed that's, that's splitting a hair. And I'd want verification by the fire department, if that's really the case, if you were going to really start going down that route.
Bob? Yes, your job for tomorrow is. Among the other things, I think.
Yeah, I'm just in a tough spot on that, because I don't have the full history on that. I was totally unaware of, of why here.
Well, basically, what we want to know is, do they have a new number for the second building? And if you could research the town code on signs by the same property owner. You, you understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
As you said, how many signs are they allowed and how many?
Here's what I'm saying.
What size?
Here's the thing, is it's the same property, same owner, same building, same business. But you know, you're putting a different, you're right, by putting a different number on the building.
I'm wondering what, what effect that has.
That's, and I would agree with you on that. I'd agree with you on that. However, you know, if I'm looking at it, still, you know, and that, and that's what I would want an answer on, but otherwise, same property, same building, same business. You know, and I think we're, and that's why I said we're kind of splitting hairs there, and I'd want to get more, before I made any type of a judgment, I'd want to make sure that I had that particular fact.
Lynn, did you want to say something?
Yeah. About the issue of the state property, and on page four of five of the minutes that are attached to our package, we're jillion counsel the applicant about DOT regulations. Do we have any kind of an answer on, does DOT turnpike, this is actually turnpike, not DOT, but is there anything that they, they would be involved in in the first place? And if so, would this become a moot issue? I don't know.
Bob?
I have nothing to offer on that, unfortunately, so do we know?
I, I would like, if possible, since we have so many questions, and as Patrick says, we're trying, we're splitting hairs right now, to table this to next month.
Yes.
So we can get some answers.
I don't believe you can do that. I think you have to make a decision before that statutorily.
I, I think since we've got questions on some of these things, that it might be reasonable to grant the rehearing, so that we can get answers on these questions as part of the rehearing, and then make a decision.
With the understanding of the applicant that it could be denied again.
That's correct. Absolutely.
Well, we need, we would definitively need to have those answers before the next, before that, before the client came back in front of us again.
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
I mean, definitively.
Yep.
So we need to have answers regarding the DOT's take on this. We need to have answers regarding, did the fire department really make another plan?
How they number it.
And what effect, and what effect does that have on the, on the ordinance?
Exactly, exactly. I agree.
And if you could just research the ordinance again, to see if there are any other stipulations or differences from what we're talking about, that would be helpful.
Yes, I mean, the only thing that I'm aware of is one ground sign being allowed per property that has 300 feet of frontage or less.
I'm pretty sure you can do that before the next meeting.
Yeah, we get, we can get the answers to those questions definitely by the end of January. But you have to make, you, statutorily, you'd have to at least decide whether or not to rehear the case.
All right, and if you need any names or anything through the state, let me know, and I'll give you some names to contact.
Okay.
All right, with all that's been said.
Yeah, I still, I still, there's just, I still don't, I don't agree with, I don't agree with like the.
But that's why we do a rehearing.
No, I mean, there's parts I don't agree with the, that they're coming back and saying, because I think that there's stuff that we pointed out that they pointed out initially that were just.
But I think if there's information that has come to light, or is suspected information that's coming to light, that could affect our decision, I think it would only be reasonable to do a rehearing. We can still say no.
But...
And the grounds could be the same.
You know, as you say, suspected information, the information should have been ready for tonight, the additional information.
I don't necessarily think so. I think they're asking for a rehearing based on some things that are there, and we're not taking testimony tonight. And I think the rehearing is for the purpose of taking testimony. Is that correct?
The idea of going through a motion for rehearing is to consider the request based on the information that's been presented to you by the applicant.
Tonight.
Yeah, tonight, from what you have in their memo. However, if you do, if the board has questions that they don't seem to have answers to, that makes them start to question their judgment the first time around, then you could err on the side of caution and grant the rehearing.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying. And we may come up with the same decision based on the criteria that we used before.
Yeah.
But I think where they've got some, they've raised some issues. I think it's only reasonable that we would listen to those issues in the form of testimony.
Okay. I know where I stand on it, so you guys make the call.
Well, somebody's going to make a motion here.
I'll make a motion in the case of Gregory E. Michael of Bernstein, Schur, Sawyer, and Nelson, PA petitioner, and Vault Motor Storage, that we grant the request for rehearing regarding case number 2015-39, in which the board voted to deny a variance under section 17.10.3 of the zoning ordinance to permit an additional 160-square-foot ground sign, whereas a 63-square-foot ground sign was permitted at 526 DW Highway in 2014. The parcel is located at 526 DW Highway in the C2 General Commercial and Aquafire Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area, tax map 5D-2, Lot 001, case 2015-46.
Second.
Lynn is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against?
Aye.
Aye.
Doesn't go.
Sorry. All right.
Minutes?
I didn't see anything, nothing clear out of me that should...
I move we approve the minutes as distributed.
Now, first of all, we have any discussions or possible actions regarding other items? Anything?
I thought Patrick said there wasn't any.
Oh, no, I jumped into the minutes.
Sorry.
Sorry. My fault.
Bob, do you have anything to add?
No.
Okay, now we can do the minutes.
Motion as proposed.
Lynn? Nothing? Patrick?
It looks good to me.
Okay. Need a second?
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four 00.
I was seated. I can concur, but I, you have the vote.
Three 0.
Yeah, three 01. And do I hear a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Second?
Aye.
All in favor? Is that a four 00?
Yes.
Four 00. And...